I didn't do it. I know. You didn't do it.
As long as everything stays this full.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's true. They also didn't.
Oh, it's that, it's probably the fall of that frisbee. Is that a frisbee?
I make a motion to approve the September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen regular meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We will recess as county commissioners and convene your solid waste commissioners. Is there a motion for the minutes of the solid waste meeting of September of the tenth?
I'm not, I somewhat.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Do you want me to do the resolutions?
Please.
A motion to approve the September twenty-second, two thousand fifteen bills is presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Finance.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Did you want to do a roll call?
Oh.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
A motion to approve the September twenty-second journal, two thousand fifteen journal voucher.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
A motion to approve the September twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
Now, we'll have a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion items, Bill?
Item A is the drop-off committee appointments. The policy committee met two weeks ago. And this is, item three A is the list of the various entities that were chosen to serve on that committee. This is a committee that is in our new solid waste plan update. The purpose of this committee is to study the drop-offs, to determine ways to increase participation, do a cost versus revenue analysis, and basically any other issues that may arise. We have Roger Klot, who was a Randolph Township trustee, Doreen Spicer, a Paris Township trustee, Dan Conrad from Conrad's disposal, which represents the small hauler, Lisa Regular, Regula Meyer from the City of Kent, who I believe is involved with Kent Environmental Council, and served a brief time on the policy committee, and then Vince Crawford from Waste Management, who satisfies the large hauler component of our committee, and also they handle the material coming from Portage County.
Bill, isn't Lisa also, she was at one point, or is she still affiliated with, is it the EPA or higher EPA or?
Not that I'm aware of. Not, not, not that I'm aware of.
She has some background with some state?
She, go ahead, I think you know.
She's a biologist?
Yeah.
Yes, no, I, yes, oh, I, I know her.
Yeah.
I've met her, and she's very, very known.
She has, oh, yeah, she has credentials that would fill a wall.
Indeed.
So, basically, as we had talked many months ago, that the policy committee would select these individuals, the, my board would appoint these individuals, so I think at this point you would send out the letter from all three commissioners, letting these individuals know that's why I included their mailing address. And then I would ask that they contact my office to schedule the first meeting, because we have a deadline of October twenty-eighth, I believe, two thousand sixteen, to have this study done. And so I would at least like to get the first couple meetings started. This committee will report back their findings and update status to the policy committee. So that is the purpose of the drop-off committee appointments.
Good choices.
Yeah, I, I believe, we had many good candidates, and I think we have a very good, good group of people.
Can we do that by journal entry?
Yes, accepted by journal entry today.
Item, oh, I'm sorry, item B is education specialist. I'm working on a job description, which I will have on your emails on Monday, as well as Janet's. I would like to make this position full-time. We do have the money in the budget. We are getting busier and busier, but I would like for the board's input on this job description, and then discuss it at my next meeting next week, if that's fair.
Bill, did, the policy committee, did you touch on that at all with them?
Not yet, because I didn't, I didn't have that time when we met for that, for that. But I did speak to the EPA about this, and they're very happy with, with that.
Make a note of that?
Yes. The caveat, I said to them that we do need some additional help in the office, and we will be true to our words about the twenty hours a week for the education and awareness. And there are, I think that is going to be a very key component. Our new website is close to being ready to go. It's going to be quite impressive, and that will be one of the key components of this position, is keeping it fresh. I don't like the same homepage all the time. As things happen, I want it to be out there. The other, item C, is invoices for curbside service. Todd and I have talked, and I've talked to Joan about this, that we, we are interested in starting to move this to the tax bills. Right now, if you have it certified, and I'm sure, you know, every single August, September, I bring in that large stack of certifications, and we're looking at waiving the two and a half percent penalty for the certifications to the tax invoices. I've talked to Janet, she's on board with us. Todd and I just have to sit down and figure out when, because what we don't want to do is leave the district a year without our revenue. So, we have this delicate balancing act between the budget, we have a threshold that we cannot fall under with the EPA and the plan, and to make sure that our cash flow is, is still robust. Now, one of the things that we have done, or we've discussed, Kent and Ravenna puts their solid waste fees on the water bills, which then alleviates us from having to do that. So, if we keep Streetsboro and Aurora, that's something that I would like to do, you know, at least put that in the contract or make that proposal, and then just have them pay us quarterly, monthly, however they want to do it, because we spend a tremendous amount of money getting the invoices printed, sending them out, having them come back in, and then Joan has to cross-check who's paid, who's not, and it would free up Joan for a lot of other things that she could do. It would, and most importantly, I think it would be just convenient. We would handle the press release, the who, what, where, and why, and then I think it just makes us that much more efficient in the whole process.
I think the, I think the cost is about ninety thousand a year.
Yeah.
I like the idea of doing, because I think it's efficient and it's a very small amount. However, some individuals certainly are not going to like us putting something on their tax bill without their permission, so my suggestion is that we do it as an opt-out program. So, we'll, we'll do it, but we will allow people to opt out if they don't want it on their taxes.
Okay.
And then for those people who opt out, if they, if they don't pay, then it'll go on the trap taxes, and they'll have to pay the penalty for that.
I, I like that idea, because, because I think if you're going to opt out, you're saying, I'm going to take responsibility of paying this.
Yeah.
But then if we have to certify it, then we've, 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 we have that extra expense and time to, to cross-check that list. That's fine, I can discuss that with, with Todd.
Most people are going to like it, it's convenient, they don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, I, I gleaned through some of those lists, and I think people with, with a lot of properties, I've noticed that they, they want to do that, and for people, you know, it, it's.
Well, it gives them an option.
Yes.
People want options.
Right, right.
They don't want to be just dictated.
Right, right. And I, and I did trade an email with a resident yesterday, who in bold letters let me know that he did not want it on his taxes, and I replied back, you live in a municipality that we could put it on the water bills. We're open to dialogue. And he seemed to be quite happy with that. So, as we go through this, we will, we will walk before we run.
When do you normally send out your bills?
We normally start in January. It's based upon how the contract is written, not all the contracts run January one to December thirty-first.
Could you phase this in?
That's the goal.
The time you do the bills?
That is, that is the goal, because as Todd and I have discussed, we, we want to make sure that we still have revenue coming in from that, from that part of the services.
You know, Bill, this is certainly not an objection, it's just an observation, and I don't know that, would even get questions on it, and I wouldn't want to raise it, but, you know, people, if they do the long form on their taxes, they deduct their real estate taxes.
Right.
Would that be part of their real estate taxes to deduct then?
I don't know. That's a very good question, though.
Because, you know, I know if I'm looking at somebody's real estate taxes, and that's not.
Yeah, I, I can tell you right now, yeah, I mean, when we do our taxes, I just take them, yeah.
It's such a small, yeah, such a small amount.
In twenty-eight dollars, twenty-nine dollars a year, you don't even think about it.
Yeah.
That could be something where maybe we could get the tax bills printed, where it's in bold print.
Well, it'll, yes.
Solid waste, yes.
Are there any, you know, I don't know, there used to be so many, let's say, spaces or whatever available, that you could add things.
Oh, I'm sure there are, but I'm sure if somebody's doing somebody's taxes, I got to tell you, you don't usually just read it.
No, no, no.
You just take that bottom line, and that's left to dust, you know?
Yep, yeah, because there's probably about thirty other people waiting outside your door to have it done.
But did you, did you mean you could delineate it right on the tax bill?
Yes.
Which I think it's, people then can, they see it, they know what it is.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that would be a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
It's something to think about, in case you get that question.
And then, item D, which is not on your agenda, this weekend is the Brim Fest.
And the balloon affair.
And the balloon affair, yes, yes.
After the balloon affair.
Yeah, I don't want to offend our friends here in Ravenna. Don will be working Thursday, tonight, for me, because I have to go home and get everything done for the weekend, but I will be there Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, I was going to take Friday off until I realized, whoops, I've got the Brim Fest to do that night, so I have my form here that I'm going to write cancel on it, and I will be in the office tomorrow. But I will, I do have a dental appointment, that was one of the two reasons why I was going to be off tomorrow. So I'm just bringing that to the board's attention, and I would like to move down to section four, personnel. This is for a leave of absence.
Okay.
I make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel purposes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Oh, we probably need to go into the other room.
You know what, I asked Deb this morning, and she said she would.
Would it be to grant a leave of absence for medical?
Yes, yes, thank you. Leave of absence for medical for.
A driver.
The driver, yes, and Bill has the, and I think that was it.
I think you have to say it's an unpaid leave.
Unpaid leave of absence, yes. Medical leave of absence.
Okay.
Do you have a form?
Not yet, because I needed to get it, but I will have him, I will have him fill out the form before he goes home. I'll sign it and send it over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
Sure, you're welcome, thank you. We will, I like the journal entries, but as Amy said, if you can get the form over here.
Yep, thank you too. Have a good day, everyone. Again, Kathleen, happy twenty-ninth birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, yes.
That makes me feel young.
Do you want to do a motion for journal entries?
Oh, I, is there a motion for journal entries?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the journal entries for today.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there more to do?
Yes. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, I think it is time that we.
All right, I'm going to pause.
Where's the?
That's very good, Kate.
Okay, we'll turn our attention now to internal services and Joanne.
All righty. I make a motion to accept the proposal of MS Consultants Incorporated, and enter into an agreement for providing construction inspection, testing services for the High Street Bridge replacement project in the Village of Manaway for the county engineer.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, per the county engineer's request, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. A motion to request that the State Director of Transportation reduce the speed limit on Sandy Lake Road, beginning at Lynn Road and ending at Malloy Road for the county engineer. This would be going from forty-five miles per hour to thirty-five.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, per the county engineer's request, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion to declare obsolete and dispose of the Portage County personnel, personal property titled to the Portage County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. A motion to enter to an agreement number five, with Northeast Ohio Behavioral Health LTD for providing individual counseling and therapeutic services for JFS. Let's see, I had a question.
Second.
Second, yes.
Any questions?
On the resolution.
Sure.
Under the first resolve, it goes from January first, two thousand fifteen, till the end of this year, but prior to this, February of this year, there was a resolution that was an amendment.
And then March again?
Yeah. So, I'm curious as to why we're going back to January.
You know, I will ask them, let me, let me look and see if their notes, when they sent it, if they said anything more about that.
Or they meant that January two thousand sixteen.
No, I'm sure it's still within, they are not expending any more money throughout the end of this year, it's going to be over at the end of this year. And I don't know if they, if she was trying to go back to the first, the original with the dates, but I can ask that question and clarify it for you.
Yeah.
And then if you want to pass it, I will give you the correct information to the ladies.
Okay. Sure, are we going to go ahead and pass this, and then have it changed?
And I will go, I, yeah, if there's any, if there's changes to be made, like it should be March instead of the January, I will let you know it, and then I'll let those guys know it.
All in favor then, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah. And the next one, entering to an agreement with NDS for the administration and implementation of the Portage County revolving loan fund plans.
I put the agreement in there for you also, because I wasn't sure if you guys had seen it prior.
Yeah.
Second.
Could I ask the question?
Sure.
Yes. Page four, yes, at the very last word, it says his, I'd like to have it say slash her.
Okay.
So that's none, none gendered.
Yeah.
And then on page five, under B, do we get these monthly reports?
I believe that they go to Todd.
I'm wondering if we couldn't ask to have.
A copy for yourselves?
Yeah, for our sheriff file or something, so we have a chance to look at it.
I will say, we can put in here the county commissioners, NDFM, or, you know, make sure that you're copied as well as them.
Okay, I would think they have been coming in, then they should be, they should be compiled somewhere, and you could possibly go in and have a look at them.
And then under six.
Page six?
Yeah.
Okay.
It said, NDS will, shall have available to us a list of all the RLF personnel approved contractor lists and any other files that may be requested. I assume that's only on request, or does Todd have that as well?
It's, I'm sure it's on request, yeah.
Okay. And then it lists appendix A and B, but there are no appendix A and B.
And those are probably, those are the different policies that we all, that have been in place, but I can get those if you'd like to see them.
That's the subordination of.
Yeah, right. Those didn't change, those are the same, that have been the same way for as long as, but if you'd like to have them, I can get them to send them to you.
Well, if they're not too voluminous, maybe put them in the sheriff's file, so we're not just reminded what they are.
I can get over that, okay.
Okay, then, any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Before we move to the blue sheets, I have an update for you on the Ritztown Water Service Agreement that we talked about the other day. I did finally talk with Charmin from the prosecutor's office. The first item that had come up when we discussed it was the language operations transfer agreement, and the top said asset transfer agreement, and she said they are, yes, one in the same. It was the difference between one attorney wanting it one way and one wanting it the other way. And originally, she thought that there might have, was going to be a separate operations agreement, but it turned out not, so it is one in the same.
Okay.
The next one was under the books and records, there was the word discretion put in there, that Ritztown had the discretion of sending us some things. And what that turned out to be was, Ritztown had some folks in their area who had originally petitioned for tap-in, but it never came to fruition, so those would be things that don't pertain to us, because they never came to fruition, and that's why they wanted them to, that's why that's put in there, so that they, it's understood that there are some things that aren't going to come to us, but it doesn't make any difference, because they never completed through the Ritztown service.
And I think, and I think Jeff brought up too, that there may be some things in there that belong to people that.
Aren't, right, yeah.
Drago and everything.
Yes, yes.
That's why that was in there.
And then the final one was, oh, I'm sorry.
I think what happened, if I could, and I don't have it, because I didn't have it on the agenda, I probably in my office, the copy that I marked on, it said, at their sole discretion, could you read that to me?
Sure, absolutely. Ritztown shall deliver to the county copies of all the books and records as defined and described in exhibit B, and all other books and records pertaining to the operation of the water system, and which, in the reasonable judgment and discretion of Ritztown Water, are segregated or segregatable by Ritztown Water from the overall records of the water company.
Now, what does that mean, that they can segregate and not give us all the records?
Okay, for example, what, she, she said that what this was trying to get across was, they have records of Mary Smith, who originally was going to do a tap-in to the Ritztown Water System, and then never finalized it. She didn't go anywhere, they have evidently several of those. And she said, we wouldn't get those, because it doesn't pertain to anything that we have, and we wouldn't go back to those people saying, what are you doing? That's what she meant.
Okay.
All right.
But when you put something like that in an agreement, they could take out anything they wanted.
Yeah.
It's at their discretion.
And because it doesn't list everything, I guess, but.
So, I'm wondering if the word could say something like, those records that are deemed to be, you know, sentenced with the approval or concurrence of the Portage County Water Department, maybe instead of saying at their discretion with the concurrence of the Water Department, that way we would see what records they were not giving us. I mean, it sounds like I don't trust them, but this is a legal agreement, so we have to make sure it's typed.
Okay, I can, I can ask for that.
Can we, so you're not comfortable with approving it with that change?
Yeah, I'll approve it with that change, for sure. Didn't we already approve it?
No.
No.
You guys didn't, you wanted to get it, you know, some kind of answer from legal on that. And then she said, when it came to the point about the instruments that may be required as evidence to the county's assumption of all obligations and contracts pursuant to any contract, she said, we will get a list from them after it's closer to the closeout of what is still open.
Okay, and then will that be an attachment to this?
And I think we should say, mark this exhibit C.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so.
Do you feel comfortable now with going ahead and processing or approving that agreement or the resolution? Okay.
Sure. I make a motion, do you have the?
Yeah.
Thank you. I make a motion that we enter into an asset transfer agreement between the Portage County Board of Commissioners and the Ritztown Water Service Company with the amendments mentioned today.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, why don't we do a roll call?
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. Great. They will be, thank you, pleased to know.
They will be pleased to know, and they also will be.
Believed.
Yeah, yeah, and it's going to be, everything should be able to be signed by all parties by the November first date, which is.
Happy, I agree with you.
The resolution, the rip?
Agreement. The, you know, the agreements are completely, you know.
One sign, you're fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to make those changes, and I'm sure I will give you one. Okay, on the pending list, the few things that have changed or, and/or are new, the first thing is county court progress is there. They have completed the pour on the last step on the east side, and next week they will begin tearing out the sidewalks in the front of the building that are along fifty-nine. I understand that either, well, they said by the end of the week, so I guess tomorrow, I should get the report on what they tested on the west side, so that we know if we're going to have to have any of that taken care of.
The new steps are beautiful.
Don't they look nice?
Yeah.
I, I, yeah.
Just so they don't crack apart.
Right, right. And I've seen the reports from this testing company, and they specifically marked the air entrapment piece, and it's above what it's supposed to be, so we hope that that's good. I've added a couple items, the first is the motor pool software. Asset Works is going to be on site the week of the twenty-fifth of September, and then the week of ten-five, they will be down training Joe and the fellows on the new stuff. We're still completing, putting tons and tons of parts in that our guys use, so that they have them readily to be able to pull when they're doing a repair order, but we're not expecting any problems, but, so that's a good piece to go forward.
Where does solid waste fit in here? I know you said it's the same software, correct?
Right.
So, will they be training?
The good, the good thing, well, the good thing about, or the way that we had talked about doing this, our guys are going to have the availability to put all of the repair pieces and parts in. So, we have all of our vehicles in the, in, in the program, including solid waste. The only one that we have not, we don't have in is the county engineer, because he operates his own facility, obviously. Someday.
See, I thought solid waste operated their own facility, as far as repairing.
They do, and what's going to happen is, we have two options. I believe we can have them directly input their repairs that they do. If they don't, Joe and those guys have offered to put them in.
Okay.
What, what we have with this new system that we never had before is the availability for every department to have a login to their vehicles, to know exactly what's been done, and where they are with conditions and so forth.
Oh, that's great.
So, for example, the sheriff, if he says, you know, if there's something about a certain cruiser, he, he can have whoever he designates to go in to look at that cruiser and look at the history of actually what's been done, the last time they got gas, where the mileage is, the whole nine yards, and that's what everybody had been looking to have.
Yeah.
So, I have no reason to believe that it won't work, because that's what they do at other sites.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing that we're not going to be able to do right away is we can't tie in the gas, the gas system to this yet. We're, we're trying to figure out a way without having to dig up all the concrete and put, lay down new things, but, but, but the information on the vehicles is, is what primarily everybody wanted to have.
Yeah, hopefully this is going to resolve a lot of the tension, maybe.
I would like to think so.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to think so. I would like to think so.
Yeah, you would like to think so.
I'm being optimistic, right? Okay?
Yes.
And then, number eight, this is the VoIP roll-off, this is the voiceover IP. We're looking at training on 10/1 now, and then on the afternoon of 10/6, going live for floors 6 and 7, that's our, our testing group is 6 and 7. And as long as we have now feel like we have worked out all of the bugs with the network people, AT&amp;T, and the Mytell people, who all are part of this, we feel that our testing is going to go fine. And as soon as that happens, then we're going to move to do the rest of this building. After this building's done, I believe I want to go to Mickey's, because that's kind of a, a simple install there. Probably the two departments that we have at the Riddle Block before we tackle the courthouse, because that's got several different departments. They may want to tweak it to their own, it's going to take a little bit more. And then we'll move out to facilities on Inferno Road, and it's, I'm sure the Justice Center's going to be last, because they're going to be the most complicated. But I've got my fingers crossed that everything is good. I don't know if any of you have made any phone calls from your phone?
Oh, I know.
You can call out. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, you didn't know that. You can call out, you just can't get calls in.
Or you can use that new phone.
Yeah, you can, you know, it, let's say, for example, we know Brian Kelly's phone number is 3588. If you pick up that phone and call 3588, it will ring on his phone in this system.
So, it's already connected?
Only outgoing, yeah. And that's why we didn't say, "Well, you can use it for everything," but, yeah. So, yeah, if you wanted to test it to see how it works. The one thing that I like is, you know, we've been within ourselves up here, I've been leaving voicemail messages on the phones, and the thing, I, I got to tell you, the thing I like the best is, there's a little red light up in the right corner, and it flashes to let you know that you have a voicemail message now. You don't have to pick up your phone and listen for the beep beep or anything like that.
And Joanne, will the voice messages be the same day they keep, they come in?
Yes, ma'am.
Because mine, sometimes I think-
No.
Like it's General Washington crossing the Delaware.
Right. What, what we currently have, it, the problem with it is, is because of the age, and because we couldn't upgrade with anything for the new, it's like a funnel. Every day they come in, and if the funnel isn't open, so that they can all slip through to wherever, that if it starts to get narrowed because there are so many, that's why they're being delayed. This system, because it's running on our network, and as long as our network is up and running, it'll be the same day, same time, as soon as you leave one. Yeah, which is very nice.
And it will show the number that's calling you?
It does show the number that's calling you as well, yeah, yeah. So, it, it's going to be great, I think everybody's going to really enjoy it, and-
I'll buy a key when we start using that.
Yeah, that's what I say, too.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Concerning the new motor pool, we were trying to go to a building in-
I forgot that one.
On Lake Street.
I've, no, yes.
Sold.
It's not sold. When I, when Jack called me back, he said, "I have had a contract on that for quite some time now." And I said, "Well, is it going through?" And he said, "They've got a cash deal now." He said, "I assume it will, because they got the cash for it." But if it doesn't, he's going to let me know. And then I told him exactly kind of what we're looking for. So, if he has something else that I don't see, or pass by, or whatever, he'll look for us. Okay?
I got that information because I was talking to Gary from Mon Goose.
Oh, yeah.
And he was looking for a place.
Another?
Well, he was looking for some other, yeah.
Okay.
Not to move Mon Goose, but for some other-
Oh, for some other, for, yeah.
And I said to them that the county was going to have a look at that, but I did know it was available.
Yeah.
And he said, "Oh, that's been sold."
Yeah, okay, yeah. They, Jack said there was a contract, he's had it for a while, but it, he doesn't have the sign down yet, because it's not complete, so.
Nate, I have another one on the bar ten.
Sure.
The door where the sign for rent is faces-
Maybe this was going to move one onto the brick, that it isn't done yet, maybe?
I don't know, I haven't done it by, but we should move it onto the brick if we can.
Yeah, I'll verify that for you. They did show it a week or two ago, we haven't heard anything yet, you know, people are a little, you know, maybe hesitant to want to sign a lease or whatever, but-
People that are looking at it, you should inform them that the interest rates may go up this week.
That's true, huh? Yeah.
Is that a legitimate question?
The bar ten?
Yeah.
It was part of that Riddle Block complex, complex, it's all, that's part of it, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and it, and it, before, it was, you know, news and-
It was a deal.
Yeah, yeah. We'll find somebody that can make use of it, I think.
All right, thanks, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Again, I ask you to please read what Ryan prepared, because he isn't under the gun, but is under the gun, to try to get this to Senator Eklund. Maybe when we come back after lunch, we can let him know.
Sure.
Okay, I think we can do the, oh, we do have one item to add to the agenda, but-
Oh, right here, yeah.
Maybe we could give the authority permission and get into the resolutions and things.
Okay.
Oh, this is a request to use the courthouse line.
Right.
This is something that's done yearly. Okay, we can add this to the journal entries, to approve this.
And we're not going to require insurance.
I think he has it.
Pardon?
I think he has it.
It doesn't say anything down here.
I think it's attached.
A certificate of liability insurance.
Oh, okay, and then, did he give the dollar?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, we'll check that.
Okay. All right, so that will be added to the days' journals. Can we do the resolutions? We need, is Jeff coming in, please?
Yeah. Okay. And make a motion to approve the Thursday, September 17th bill's ACH payments, as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Yes.
A motion to approve the Thursday, September 17th, 2015 wire transfers for health benefits is presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
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 A motion to approve the Thursday, September 17th journal vouchers, as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second. Sorry.
Sorry, roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
A motion to approve the Thursday, September 17th, 2015 den and now certification, as presented by the county auditor.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm waiting for Maureen to say roll call before I say.
Okay, to focus our attention on discussion items?
Yes.
Okay. This is the tuition reimbursement program for J. Job and Family Service. I think I'm going to hold with my opinion of not to go forward with this, only because I think the other agencies aren't able to do it. I know Job and Family has their own funding, but, and I, I think unfortunately for me, I relate to times going by when, in Job and Family, there was the reimbursement policy, and it seems like, again, just recalling times going by, not saying they're going, that would be the same thing, but-
Was it abuse, Maureen, or something? I mean, was it-
Well, you know, I suppose that is maybe subjective as it was, but I, I have one classic memory, and that was someone that ended up getting their law degree, then left, and so the Job and Family Service money paid for that law degree, and, um-
Wow.
But, but I think that just kind of maybe focuses on the point of, educational opportunities are wonderful, that's the question.
Yes, yes.
I suppose it's for me maybe more of the economy, should the funds, in this case, the federal funds pay for that? And I, I think maybe they're saying, I, I don't know if they're saying, "Well, for each year that you, you know, that your training would be paid for, you'll give a year back." I don't, I-
I think the proposal that she brought forward, and we don't have it in the pack today, so we could look at it again, but I think the proposal was that it has to be relevant to the job that you're doing. It has to, you have to stay so many years or you pay it back. I don't know if it was a percentage that was being paid, or if it was the hundred percent, I don't remember.
It usually is a lesser percent.
So, it's, there's a real benefit to the county if people, you know, advance in their training and education, as long as it's relevant to the job. And so, my thinking is that we should not make it a general policy of the county, because we just can't afford to do that. However, for those departments where there's other money, like grant money coming in, if they, if they can come up with the funding for it, then I would think we would want to approve it, because it's not coming out of the general fund, it is a benefit to the county. So, I would like to suggest that we do a resolution that would indicate that it's, you know, the general fund is not doing it, and, and that it can only be done if there's money available in the department other than from the general fund, something like that.
I just don't think it, it makes the question fair enough, just because one fund is able to do it, because there's a lot of money coming into Job and Family. Again, that, that's my premise. Plus, I know in this case, the interim director is working on a PhD, would that apply for, online, would that apply for?
Well, see, there has to be some stipulations and some parameters in this, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, didn't she bring a proposal, and shouldn't we look at that?
Well, I'm, I'm saying that I'm not, I'm not going to approve it, so, I mean, fine, you can have a look at it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just not, until there's ability for us to be able, you know, it's a similar type thing, I think, when we got into increases. And I don't even want to go there, because that gets so convoluted. But if you can't do it for one, you know what we're going through right now.
Right.
Well, my thinking is, we would not approve it just for Job and Family Services, that we would have a general policy in our personnel policy manual, setting the parameters for it, that if it's, if it's job-related, if it's approved by the director or the elected official, with provisions that they must stay so many years after they get reimbursed, and so forth. And I know it was all in that, in that proposal.
But if we put it in the policy, isn't that affecting all of you?
Yes, because I don't think we should do one special for Job and Family Services. It should be for all of them. If, if, for example, one of our departments was able to get a grant for doing certain things, and part of that grant could be used for additional training, you know, it's in our benefit, if it doesn't cost us anything from the general fund.
Well, that's, you know, some additional training, I suppose that's a fine line, but you're talking about someone taking the time to, I would imagine, complete a degree, where those opportunities exist, and-
You know, I may be, maybe be conflict of interest for me to even vote on this, I don't know, because that's how my education was paid for, was with General Electric. I mean-
What would be a conflict?
And I mean, obviously, I'm-
With public funds?
No. General Electric paid, I think, like eighty-
Just, that's General Electric.
Right, oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so that's how I got my education.
Yeah, no, and that, that's, I mean, I don't mean it swiftly, I mean, it's commendable, and it's a wonderful program that GE was able to do, but that's in the cost of a lightbulb.
Sure.
Where the money's going to come out of Job and Family Services, and they have a plentiful budget, or any of these other federal programs, but that's money that's coming out of that federal program that could go to serve.
So, you're thinking that we're going to kind of take money from the people in a sense to do this?
Well, it's going to be deferred, and there's benefit, I don't dispute that, is what Kathleen said, but still, it's, it's program money that possibly could be spent on a, on an eligible person, or, you know, those other programs, like monetary sources.
I would assume if we had it only with the approval of the director or elected official, they wouldn't allow someone just to get an unrelated degree or anything like that, but if you have a promising employee who's hardworking and doing a great job for us, to give them the kind of training and education they need to move up, it sounds like a good thing. And if we're not paying for it from the general fund, why not?
Are you saying, like, the enterprise funds are okay, like Solid Waste, Water, Dog Ward and Wick? Is that what you're saying? Would you say no general funds?
Something not from the general fund.
Not general funds, so those would be okay?
Yeah, well, that would be my view, there's no reason for us not to do it, but, well-
Well, I think we're, we're going to, right now, I think we would cause some problems, because I know I've got departments, well, we've had presentations with people saying they gave raises in this department, and some of the raises, we didn't even know about, you know, so-
But this is different, because the, if we write the policy, it'll be such that they know it cannot come from the general fund. And if they're, if they're fortunate enough to get a grant to do the training, I can see that maybe the probation department might have opportunities.
Well, you're talking about training, Kathleen, I don't make any distinction, such as lean, which was a good thing, but it, it started and it, and it ended. You're talking about someone being able to complete maybe their educational requirements. And again, you know, your point about General Electric, it's very well-made and well-taken, but I'm, because we can't do it unequivocally, I'm just not going to support it, so.
Yeah.
We can bring it back, or whatever your pleasure is.
Let's, let's table it for right now.
Well, we can't, I don't want to table it, because that just takes it off the table. Well, what I'd like to do is get something in writing that would be more precise, so we know exactly what it is.
Well, then, should we, by journal entry, not approve it?
No, I would rather bring it back.
Well, I, well, I would, add it to journal entries as not being approved.
Right now, yes.
Is that, okay, with you, you want a separate journal entry?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so, is there a motion to not approve?
Do we need to do that with a journal entry, make a motion?
Yeah, because we're separating.
It's going to be separate.
Motion, journal entry, not to approve the tuition reimbursement program as of now?
I'll second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that's resolved. Okay, next, would be the county recorder, Bonnie Howes, sent a request about the 450 fee, and she had quite a bit of documentation.
Oh, my.
Yes, indeed.
This was troubling to me.
Indeed.
You know, that comment that she made, "I am the only recorder's office in Ohio using ISSG," and I don't know what that is, but as their server-
It's her server.
-all other have dropped them. That, that should be alarming to us.
Well, I spoke to Bonnie two years ago, maybe it was three years ago, and she said that she needed the ability to redact, because the law had changed. And so, she'd gone to Brian to ask, "What, what can I do to ...?" And he suggested she needed new computers. So, she used some of her money and bought new computers. And then, they got the software to do the redact, and then she was informed by Brian that it wouldn't work, or she found out it didn't work. And now, she has been, ever since she was first elected, she had been trying to get the redact operation in her, in her area. And at the time, I suggested to her, and I would suggest it again, find out what the other recorder's offices are using, and then maybe propose that we get that, because there's no reason for her to go year after year after year without the ability to automatically do redacting. do redacting.
Isn't she part of the data processing board?
Yeah.
Why doesn't she bring this up in there, or does she?
She hasn't, when I've been there.
What, would it be appropriate to ask you perhaps to ask her to do that, or to bring it up?
I would think so.
And see if we can't clear it up?
So, obviously, she's been asking around, or she would say, "I'm the only recorder's office in Ohio," so-
Yeah, the ISSG is, that's the software, isn't it?
Yeah, it's the server, but I, I mean, I don't, I'm not-
She must have more information that she may be able to give us, because she said it's gonna be over four hundred thousand, so she must have done some work with this. So, maybe we could reschedule a meeting and have Brian here-
And have, yes.
And Bonnie, and Todd.
Do you want to initiate it though, through data processing, and then do this?
Sure, that'd be all right.
Yeah. Because then that's the board that's supposed to talk about-
You only meet once a month, so, does that one a month?
Supposed to be, it's supposed to talk about compatibility, but, you know, whatever, however you want to do this.
So, Bonnie didn't get a new server when everybody else did, unlike, I mean, I thought we all got new servers, you know?
I don't know, but there's, there's gotta be a way for her to do it. Every other recorder in the state is doing it, so. She's asking, though, in this particular request-
Oh, yeah, I, I, she needs-
For the, for the four dollars and fifty cents, so we should probably do it journal entry.
It's a resolution that we have to bring back to you.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm thinking that Todd will bring it back, but I'll check with him.
So, we're agreeing upon doing the 450.
Yes.
And Debbie will bring us back the resolution.
Yes.
So, we could let Bonnie know.
And you know, when I was reading her letter, though, I, Judge Pittman called me yesterday, and she said, and I'm not tech savvy enough to know that, like, I don't really know what Bonnie's saying.
She said she needed money.
She's saying that Court View is out of date, that they need another program. You've heard that before? Okay, well-
When Todd, we need to find out that, Todd.
Maybe we'll find out for her too, I don't know.
I think, I think Brian was supposed to pay it, or-
Oh, no, this is a, that was paid, but, that's a whole story that I won't get into here. Yeah, I won't. But what I'm saying is, she's saying Court View itself is outdated, and I, I didn't know that.
I thought we bought the update months ago.
Well, she's saying the program Court View, they shouldn't be using that. Other counties are using something else.
What counties? I thought it was an update.
Well, have they had any meeting with Brian?
Not that I know of, Maureen. We definitely need to have some meetings to get, I like to get everything out.
You know, actually, I thought with the new servers, all that junk email and anything would be gone, and it's not.
Yeah, okay.
So, before you move on, I'm sorry, did you want to meet with Bonnie and Brian and Todd here, or wait for data processing board?
I think we should meet as soon as possible, because that could be another month.
Right.
I think we should meet as soon as possible.
Let's meet first. And then, should we also schedule a meeting with, was it Judge Pittman that spoke to you?
And maybe Brian?
Yeah. And Brian, and Todd, yeah.
I agree.
So, we can get a handle on what we're supposed to do.
Let's try to get them set up as soon as possible.
Because I'm not tech savvy enough to know what we would-
Well, you, you know, you're savvy enough, and as you pointed out, they have a need. We need, we need to respond to that.
You guys got this morning. Denise's response, number three.
Oh, good. I'm glad we got this about. I called Denise yesterday, but she was out.
You know, yeah, this, I guess, though, I don't understand why we were told initially that it didn't apply to cars and boats.
Well, one of our attorneys told us.
Yeah, great. And it doesn't apply. So-
Okay. So, we'll let Mr. Ames know?
Oh, yes. Yes.
And thank him for bringing it forward.
I wonder, can we share this with Mr. Ames or not? Is this-
I can cut and paste it and send him that chapter.
Sure. All right. The section is applicable.
I think he sent us the chapter.
Whatever is applicable.
You saw it as mine.
Okay, can we move on to, and we just took care of Mr. Ames, number three.
Yes. You know, that human resources director, are we talking about the job description? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
You know, Todd has some ideas on that.
Oh, good.
And I, I called him this morning and asked him if he would feel comfortable coming before the board and talking about his ideas, and he said he would like to do that maybe with Janet.
Oh, good.
And that was just this morning, so it's really too late to put it on today's agenda. So, I'd kind of like to hear what he has to say. He, he thinks a lot about all this stuff. He has it together. Todd, great.
So, he was-
I missed what you said, because I was reading this, I'm sorry.
Okay. He has some ideas on this human resources hire, and he's gonna share them with the board, but he said he would like to do it with Jim.
Yeah, that's good.
So, I think maybe we could send him-
They probably talked, so we could ask them both to come down, and I'd welcome any comment.
Sure, me too.
On the position description.
Right, right.
Okay. Okay. Did, shall we go over the, shall we go over the job description?
Well, we can. Do you not want to hear?
I do, but I, but I thought we could share on-
You know, the only thing I saw Joanne had marked five for it.
Okay, this is different. Anything that you want to bring up.
Okay, I guess this is, this has been corrected. They both, okay, February 2014, current. Joanne had marked on this that internal services, I'm sure you guys have that, right?
Yes.
And I just made a comment the other day when we were talking about this, that the supervisory requirements, my decision serves as a coach mentor for other department heads, directors, and managers.
But we're working from this strength. We decided last week to work from this strength.
So, we're not, we're not gonna use, we're not gonna use that as a coach mentor.
Okay. See, that's got 2015 on, let's watch out that's the most common.
We decided to use this job description and then revise it as we stayed fit.
Okay.
Do you want me to-
Sure.
Sure, go ahead.
Formulate one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven dot from the top, or one, two, three, fourth from the bottom. Formulates personnel policies and develops methods. I thought we should say formulates and recommends, add the word "and" recommends personnel policies. And then, on the second dot from the bottom, where it says maintains statistical data, prepares reports and correspondence, and handles coordinates, and I added the words helps to resolve, because it says that they're going to resolve, and sometimes, you know, they can't, but helps to resolve. And then, if that's okay, on the next page of the first dot, I think this is the one that Joanne's department takes care of, so we probably should consider removing it. It says directs and develops implementation and coordination of safety programs for the county. If that's okay. Then, going under critical skills and expertise, it'll be the one, two, three, four, fifth dot down, knowledge of personal computer operations, software, word processing, spreadsheet, and what's H R I S?
Human resource, something, systems?
Yeah, but it should be spelled out. Whatever that is, it should be spelled out.
Yeah, I just took it to be a software for human resources.
A system instead of, oh, no, not system. There's a bracket there that should be removed. I don't know why it's there. And on the next page-
You know, we've got a law degree in there for the standards. You took that out, right?
You can, if, what it says on the job standard, you can take it out if you're more comfortable, but it just says a law degree, or a master's degree, or business, or public administration, or-
It doesn't say or.
Yes, it does. It says or.
Mine doesn't. Mine says a law degree, Tom, a master's degree.
No, but, yeah, they're listing all those saying, or, a related field. You can have a law degree, a master of human resource, a business, or public administration, or related field from an accredited college or university in five years. If there's any doubt about it, you can add an or, or you can take it out. I mean-
I would take it out. You would take out the or for the law degree?
Oh, okay. I think there's an advantage to having one. I don't think it's required.
You know, I think maybe if we don't put it, I was gonna say how we could accommodate this, not put it in there, because I think when it's the first thing in the job standard, almost it implies-
If you don't have it, then don't apply.
Yeah, so, the master's degree, maybe we should go with the, the minimum, which would be the, the master's degree in human resource, a business, public administration, or, or the related field. So, the related field could be a, a law degree. We're not gonna exclude anyone.
Right, right.
With, you know, that, that doesn't have one, or does have one. Certainly, we wouldn't do that. It could be a real plus, but just so it doesn't imply that we want just a, an attorney.
So, in the old one, we've got that under job standards, when they did the new one, 2015, which we're not-
We're not looking at the new one.
I understand that, but I need to know what, what the thought process was. Who, who did the 2015? We didn't do that?
No.
Okay.
That was something that Denise did on her own, and I think it was because there was some conversation about contracting with her.
Okay, okay, so, because she's got required, just a master's degree, preferred master's degree, but require, so we want a required master's degree?
Well, it says business or public administration or related field. So, if you're in human resources and you have a master's in it, you probably don't get a bachelor's with human resources. Probably get a bachelor's in business or public administration.
Yeah, your bachelor's could be in most anything.
Right, right.
Just so you have the advanced degree.
Sure.
And then, on the last page, under responsibilities, it says incumbent supervises three subordinates. I think the word "three" should be removed, and just say the incumbent supervises subordinates, because we don't know if we're gonna have three or two, or what.
We better get, we better get some help. Okay. So, if those changes, would you like to have that brought back and see them? How would you like to proceed with it?
Well, maybe we should hold it until we talk to Todd and Janet, because they may have some suggestions. Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, that's good. Is that why you're not wanting to-
I thought we were gonna do that anyway.
Yes, we are.
I just didn't know if you wanted this, final four, when they come up?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
I think we should probably share that with them, too, with them on the advanced level. Okay.
The oversight committee is number five, is a draft letter that you should have.
Oh, my gosh, I didn't get this.
Yeah, that data is incorrect. Which state?
Number- Twenty sixteen? Yeah.
Yeah.
The question that I have is, I attached the resolution as well, and Maureen, you had said this was going to be an open process at the sales and use tax meeting, the public hearing?
Yes.
So, open to just the two citizens at large? Because everybody else is like a judge, a commissioner?
Yeah, right, I mean, we, somehow, we want people to have the opportunity to apply for this.
Right. But just the citizens, or are you talking, I mean, you're not gonna ask the judges, you're gonna ask them who they want, correct?
Right. We'll advertise for the citizens at large.
That's it?
Yeah. But, not for the judges, we, we just ask them to please-
Right, so this letter will change, which would be, yeah, which, one judge, one, and are you asking for a representative, or you want Vic Velucci?
Oh, no. Oh, I could be, I have the prosecutors. And I, I think that because we decided we wouldn't have a member of the budget commission because the prosecutor is on the budget.
Prosecutor is a member of the budget commission.
So, I, I would rather the elected official.
Okay, so, so it's Dave Dope, Vic Velucci, send one letter to Tom Kelsey for the township.
Yes, good.
One letter to each of the mayors, and say, please get together and choose one-
Yeah, they don't have an organization, you're right.
So, it's villages and cities together, not a village and a city, it's one. Joel Mallory would be the mental health recovery board, right? University Hospital's Steve Colleke, or his representative. Didn't you talk about somebody from their-
You know, I would prefer somebody from the university hospital.
Itself, not the sort of-
Steve is the CEO of it, of the university hospitals.
Maureen thinks so. We send it to the corporate level and ask for a representative?
Well, I, I think it'd be facilitated through Steve, but I would, I would prefer we have someone that is a university hospital. I suppose they all are employees now.
I think Steve is the CEO of university hospitals.
Right, I would rather have a UH, as, you know, when we first met with the gentleman, the CEO of university hospital, he had a whole contingency of people with him from UH, and-
So, send it to the CEO of, I mean, the main campus, right?
Right.
So, not Steve.
I would hope, maybe his, maybe his HR person, well, whatever, someone that they designate.
Okay.
I have a suggested change in the first paragraph, the very last sentence, it says, "We voted to impose," I would like to take that word out and put, "We voted to enact."
But we're imposing it. Where are we?
We are, but it's also enacting it.
The draft.
Okay. Oh, no, that's, you know, again, that's such a whatever point with me, because it's a fundamental right to be able to vote on things like that. But we did impose it.
Well, you haven't yet. So, I have to hold this, I have to hold this until you actually do it, or say you intend to discuss it. I don't know how you want to do that. I can hold this until, until you decide.
So, you want to enact the-
Sure.
All right.
Okay. I'll get those ready.
Same thing, but it sounds a little-
Okay, is that clear? Clarify everything you need?
Sure, yes.
Because we tend to, I don't mean confusing, we're all voicing our opinions, sometimes it doesn't go out.
Yeah, number six, aren't we?
Oh, yes, okay, number six. Why am I continuously putting something?
I would like to attend-
Yeah, I think I would, too.
Oh, this is the one in Columbus?
Yeah. It's about injection wells.
Yes. And you're going to give a, is it testimony, or?
No, I think we're just gonna learn more about them, right?
Well, we're going to go there and lobby to try to get the law changed.
Look at that on your calendar, we'll argue for-
And that, certainly, absolutely, that's fine.
Well, I thought we were going to learn more about them. We're not gonna learn more about them?
No, sure, probably, but I think you may want to borrow some flakery from Mary Greer when you go down.
She'll probably be there, won't she?
I bet she will.
It's about supporting the moratorium on the injection wells.
Okay. Well, that is clear. I'm not sure, let me check my October sixteenth.
And so, they put it before county commission association committee, and they're going to discuss it and decide whether or not the county commission's association wants to support the idea of a moratorium until additional regulations are, okay? And we'll learn something. We always learn something.
Under information only, if you did look at all of Jack Redwood's write-ups, there were just a couple that we seen indicate were out of compliance. One was on, I think, they, they were in compliance, but they weren't, was it inventory?
It's number two.
Yeah, yeah. So, I would, these are just rules for our benefit, see what is, he's been very, very active in following up on his recent complaints.
He had two of them, one under one and two. One is a minor, but one, they have to repair a berm around the parameter, and the other one, though, has many issues, so.
But by and large, though, he gave them a, I thought, gave them a, they were in compliance.
No, these are out of compliance. He says the following violations are present. The first one is where he didn't have any violations, but he told them that they have to put that berm, upgrade the berm.
Right. I just thought that all four of them, he, he did say were okay. There was some acceptance, and I don't know if he gave them corrective action.
Well, and two, he has violations listed.
I think what I was reading was, toward the facility, "The product you manage was handled in a safe and secure fashion, and I did not note any issues with the physical operation."
You said on two?
Yes. Well, this, I'm assuming it was two.
But then, the second paragraph says however.
I know, I know. That's what I was mentioning. He, I think unequivocally, you know, in his, his first paragraph, the first whatever to us, would indicate they were in compliance. would indicate they were in compliance, then he did cite some issues. And I, I don't know, you know, the facilities are not being met. I don't know as though he made that any condition of what. So I just thought, well, it's for our information and we'll just.
Well, the way I read it was the physical, the records, he, the physical facility inspection was fine. But I did note some deficiencies in your record keeping.
Right.
So it's in the record keeping where he cited there were violations.
Yeah. You know what? We don't know Kathleen, the consequences of that. If he gives an eight, you know, says the physical plant is okay, does that supersede that? You know, I don't, I don't know that. We can ask Jack. You know, again, is there corrective action? Do they have to?
Yes, they have to. Do you take care of this or do you come back next time?
Well, you know, I wonder why he doesn't say that though, because in the other sheet, he says, "They are to clean up this property in a timely manner will result in referral to Portage County Board of Health and possible legal action."
Well, that's probably the physical operation of it.
Well, maybe that's because he said they were fine physi, and the physical.
No, that's a different one. She was.
Well, you know, I would think, again, it's information, if you maybe have questions, maybe get Jack to call and let him clarify. Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. Now, the next thing actually involves Kelly Jo, so she's a, you're coming here for everything?
Regular meeting.
Oh, okay.
Pushing me on.
All right. And that was the security.
No, no, no. No.
The security in the building. I guess we can talk to, will it come on? Okay. And let me get your tag. It's got to be buried or somewhere. I'm, I'm going to get it. It's just a question. If I need.
It's the fattest one.
I've got it. Oh, yes. Okay. Please.
Okay. Our first.
Just continue, but start.
Okay. The first section is executive session, so.
Make a motion, we're going to executive session for personnel issues such as hiring and promoting.
Second that?
Executive session is not rocall.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Motion to exit the executive session?
Second.
Rocal.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Yes, there is. If anyone wrote this down, it's not, I'll try to.
I think Amy gets the same.
Adrian G., is everything?
All right, there is, yeah, items for signature. We signed the personal action only rule, operating the wage increase for the program officer at the Ohio, he is jobs division of jobs family services. And I'm trying to think that we have, we do have an amount, but, and I think it's from nineteen fifty, nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents, twenty dollars and three cents. Kelly Jo can give you all the particulars on names. We agreed to promote the JFS lead supervisor to JFS administrator effective Monday, September the twenty-eighth for the Public Assistance Division of Job and Family. And I do, did not write down the, I know you told us, Kelly Jo, that the amount, we agreed to hire income maintenance A two. We have two vacancies. Both of these individuals will start October the fifth. And again, I think I do just, Kelly Jo has the particulars as to the people's names and the rates. Is that totally confusing?
No, that was great.
Okay, the non-executive, anything did I miss?
The settlement agreement?
Yes, I'm sorry, the settlement.
Yeah.
We are entering into a settlement agreement. I don't know, do we want to state that? A settlement agreement prepared by our attorney, David Brood, with a provider. And Kelly Jo will give you this.
I'm holding this, you'll bring another form?
Yes.
Okay. So something else? The PA, the administrator, I need to change it too because of status, so I'll bring you a model.
Everything else, got that?
Okay. Item four, I, open session.
Items F and G. Several meetings ago, I believe, the board approved the termination of the contract between the Ohio Works First Jobs Division and Family and Community Services. We had asked to bring the program in-house. And while we don't want to not bring the program in-house, we had a meeting last week with Carol Beatty and Mark Frison. We would like a longer transition period, just so that we can ensure that the clients, the process is seamless as needs to be for the clients who are moving between divisions. So I'd like to put those two positions on hold until next Thursday, so I can give you more detail about the transition period, because I will be recommending that that contract is extended for a few months, just so that we can have a more seamless process.
And Kelly Jo, is it in your opinion, in your professional opinion, that this is the thing to do now to bring that contract in-house?
Yes, definitely. Family and Community Services were the right choice when we, when the program started, but we have restructured so that we really are staffed in our jobs area and confident that we can meet the needs. That doesn't mean that we won't look at future opportunities with the community partners to help support the clients, but we think we can be the lead in this moving forward.
So they have been informed?
Um, we met with them this week. We're going to meet with them again next Tuesday because we all, we're going to talk about ideas in which to kind of extend it a little bit. So that's why I want to wait till next Thursday to bring it all to you.
Okay, so you will bring?
I'll bring it all back to you. So I'm just going to postpone F and G. Yep.
Yeah, that was one of our issues previously that wasn't brought to us.
Correct.
And their job and family, I'm sorry, family and community are well aware of it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then under the section of updates, you have a flyer in your packet. It's probably buried. So it looks like this.
It's in the back.
We, well, you all know that we received awards from Passages not too long ago, just because of our involvement on the fatherhood initiatives. And so we are committed to evolving that relationship. And we leased, leased a video. It's called Fatherhood 101. State Representative Jones, Edward Jones, and Dr. Moore, actually, were in the video. And it really talks about the needs to have families involved with their families and their children. And so we'd like to show this movie in different venues throughout Portage County over the next twelve months to really bring attention to the initiative. So we got your permission a few weeks ago to show the first movie on the courthouse lawn. And that will be on, where's the date? It's not on here.
It's at?
September thirtieth. This Wednesday, September thirtieth, on the courthouse lawn from six thirty PM to eight thirty. And so we've scheduled a few sites already, if you can see the little reel on the side. After that, we're going to show it on October twenty-fourth at the Reed Memorial Library. That's on a Saturday. They're going to spend time with the kids while we show the movie to the parents. And then Kent State University has agreed to show it to their human development classrooms so we can engage the professionals going into the field about the importance of fathers. And then right now, Brian Boykin and myself are in discussions with the sheriff's office. We want to show the movie in, in the county jail. So the schedule will evolve, but we wanted to highlight what we have already scheduled in two thousand and fifteen. So if you're available and you want to come out and have free popcorn and watch the movie outside, but we are going to send a press release on this as long as you give us our blessings and move forward with this initiative.
Is there a rain gate in case it rains?
I guess we should think about that. No, that's a good idea, but I'll find one.
Well, no, only because the courthouse, well, unfortunately, the courthouse lawn, if it rains, we're going to saturate it. I hope it doesn't.
Hope not either.
It sounds like a nice venue. And it's a two-hour movie actually?
Actually, the movie's only an hour and like ten minutes. We just used that as the timeframe, just in case people weren't there and they're still getting situated.
So it wouldn't be an appropriate thing to take to like Rotary or any, any place like that?
It could be if they're engaged with families or want to support it. We, we have that lease for a year, so we can show it. We're going to show it in our jobs workshops with the fathers that we're working with. It's very powerful. So I think it's been really highly what we needed.
Yeah, we know it seems the service clubs can be, have an opportunity to view the type of services that you provide would be a real enhancer for them. But most of those, like Kowana, Rotary, probably only meet, they meet maybe an hour or max.
It is a little bit over an hour.
Yeah, so I, the movie, but you might want to contact some of them to talk to them about the fatherhood initiative.
You would definitely do.
I don't know, do you have any speakers? Do you, you know, do people in job and family go out and?
We do.
Talk to the service clubs?
We do.
Yeah, it's such an important topic, fatherhood, so maybe, you know.
We, NEOMID has committed to also showing at their facility. It's just we're trying to shore up a date. So if you have other suggestions, we'll look into the ones you have. We're going to do this all the way through next summer when we celebrate that day.
I'd like to suggest that you, unless you're seating, provided that, ask them to bring chairs.
We were going to bring chairs, but we could also add that if they want to bring their own.
Well, you have chairs, you don't need people to bring them.
They're foldable unless they have comfortable chairs, you know, some people have ones, but that's, we could still put that seating's available.
Sometimes unless you're, you know, it's hard on your back if you have to sit. What about downtown Kent? They have a lot of, they have movies.
Kent Stage was brought up as a place to show. Is it called Kent Stage?
It's a good inside, yeah.
Yeah.
But they have a, they have a, what do you call those?
It's a gazebo.
Yes.
Yeah. They've outreach to them. They outreach, we didn't, we haven't really connected.
The weather will be getting cold, so anything that goes past October would probably be inside.
Indoors.
Kent Stage is inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
And NEOMID said that they would want theirs inside too, so.
You might check with, I think, is it at Hometown? Vicky, is it Hometown Bank?
Yes.
The sponsor of those?
Yes, yes.
But you're right, I imagine, maybe it's too late in the year, but that way people, you know, they really do take advantage and congregate down.
There's a, there's a big crowd that attends those.
Yeah, so you might want to talk with whoever coordinates that at Hometown Bank.
Okay.
If you can stick that in.
Yeah, we have a few months to fill.
Okay.
And then to B, I did not have a signature from Donna Sadler on a travel reimbursement. So I just was seeking your permission so that we can move forward with reimbursing from a nine-three travel.
That's fine. Sure. Okay, the building security.
Yes, that was my last item that I was, we were going to talk about. I, I thought we were going to, did you guys want to talk about that? I was asked to put that on.
We were supposed to meet with Brad, Chromus, some others too, to talk about, when we had leadership, you brought up, you were there.
Yeah.
And we talked generally about security in this building. Yeah, and then there's a small committee formed that's going to look into it.
Right, I think Deb had thought we could, we broached the topic, but then we've since talked about it. So I was asked to put it on to talk about it between us, I think. So, but I, yeah, we're involved in the discussions already, so we'll.
All right, so we're cool on it, right?
Yes, we're happy that the commissioners are looking at security.
You're involved, we know you're involved.
I'm involved. Okay. That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, are we ready to move on?
We are.
We're done?
Done till one thirty.
Okay.
Now, the sheriff is coming in here, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you know what that's about? This is the budget, his quarterly meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. So again, I'd ask you, please look at Ryan's, because he's wanting us to get back to him. And I think, is that, so we? Okay.
We do lunch today.
Yes, we do. So we are recess for lunch.
What, Amy? Did you say?
I think Deb had a couple a little more.
Questions? Well, just tell her to come in here and ask them.
Okay.
Is this on this letter that you changed or may change this? You know, if you look at number two, the county enforces those weight limits by granting permits for overweight traffic and having law enforcement for those who, I would think it would be relying on law enforcement for those who do not comply or not have it, rather than, I would think that would. On this first change, Deb, as I read it, I read that it says travel and then, and having law enforcement for those who do not have a permit, I would think it might be better to say, and relying on law enforcement for those who do not have a permit unless, it was your change, Kathleen, so.
Oh, this is something we already read earlier.
Your comments are there. I just made your comments. I took your written comments.
Are they in red?
They're in red, yes.
Okay.
Again, I just thought it would read better to say relying on law enforcement.
Yeah.
And having law enforcement.
Yeah.
Yes, I do too.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. I didn't even get to the second page. Oops.
You know, the one thing that worries me about it, when, when they put here, this is from Denise, "As any zoning restrictions relative to an injection well operation would be unenforceable, the township's only recourse is with the state." That's correct. But there's more than one kind of traffic on those roads. A lot, most of the traffic and the ones that are concerned about are injection well traffic. However, when, when the township trustees brought the Ohio Highway Patrol out there to do weight checks, some of the people that were out there driving probably were not part of the, of the injection well traffic.
I'm sure there's.
So they could, they could have checked their weight if it wasn't part of that, part of the Ruma. But for some reason, I think the prosecutor's office told them to back off and go away.
Well, I think that's because how would you know if they're part of the injection? I mean, that's kind of confusing. How would you know? How? And if they're stopping people that are part of that?
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe it's fine just the way it is because.
Do you want me to soften it a little bit? We believe that any zoning restrictions relative, is it softer, you like to put it?
We could just add relative to the Ruma or something. As any zoning restriction relative, I think it's okay. It's okay. I just have that underlying feeling that we're not being, that somehow there's information that's not in here that should be, but I'm thinking it's okay.
Well, she's got relative to an injection well, so she's not saying any traffic or whatever.
Right.
So.
Yeah, she's correct, yeah. But there is a zoning, something zoning that you can have. I need to get more of a handle on that because we had asked Todd months ago if he would draft a model for the townships. Do you remember that when we were going to present it at the Township Association meeting? So I need to check with Todd or if someone else can to find out where that is, if he has something.
So is this letter ready to go then? Is this ready as opposed?
With that?
Yeah, it's talking about till next week. There's a hundred and fifty, you've got to get the mail merge. So you want to send it to all the Allen Road and Sheldon Road residents, only the ones that are on the route, correct? Can I have that route from Anthony already?
Yeah.
The engineer and then Chris McDury? Anybody else? And what do you want to?
Should we not send it to the township trustees?
Yeah, it's, it is addressed to them.
That is addressed, yeah.
All right, that's a given, okay.
Okay, so what do you want me to send? What, do you want me to send a copy of the Ruma? Do you want me to send anything at all with it or nothing?
It wouldn't hurt, but how much paper?
It's a lot.
A lot.
I mean, they've.
We could say in here, a copy of the Ruma is available for your review or purview at the county office.
Or just, just request it.
Upon request, maybe instead.
Upon request, yeah. Should we say something that, I guess you never assume that they know, you know, but I would think they probably are. Well, I sent one to one of them.
And you know what, Deb? Because we're sending this to the residents.
Right out, really?
Say what.
Yeah, and then copy available upon request. No aftername.
Absolutely. Maybe you should say because it's voluminous, I mean, it's not.
It's not too bad, but it's pretty, it would be, it wouldn't be a regular.
Somebody might not even be interested in looking.
Right.
But, you know, just the fact it's a large document, but we certainly will make it available.
All right, I'll get that ready.
All right.
Okay. That's it?
Oh, Tony Jo was in last week and left tickets. There's only, did you take hers?
No, you know what, I, I just sent a donation because I've got that Hope in a Handbag that same night.
Okay, well, we're missing two. We got to return all four of them.
Yeah, I guess I would just send a donation if I'm going to do it. I forgot, forgot.
Okay. Well, we're missing two tickets.
I don't want, you don't want mine.
Yeah, Garrett's phone.
No, no, no. I don't want two tickets.
No, we don't. I'm just saying, I'm just letting you guys remember because we have to send them back to her on the thirtieth.
Okay.
What, how much was it?
Sixty dollars, a tea-ish. But like I said, I've got the Hope in a Handbag. I don't know if you're going to that or not. I go to that every year.
Okay.
And you got that we got on TV?
No, we got that. Okay, we are recess for lunch.
Yes, really great. We get Monday, so one thirty.
Is that going on our ballot?
No.
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 It's not going on any ballot.
Todd, you want to sit up here?
No, definitely isn't going to be on any ballot.
He tries to stay away from it.
We don't want. How would you like to proceed here? Go ahead, just.
Is that up to us?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I went over some numbers that we're on this morning, and some of this is a little difficult, from the standpoint that we still don't have one of the union contracts, um, that went to fact finding, we've not gotten an answer back on that yet. So, the numbers might be a little bit off.
Are you using any, are you guessing on any numbers in that Ron, for the fact finding, or so what you're doing, or?
Yeah, for the most part. Back in January, you put some money in our budget for a percent and a half raise for everybody, union, non-union. Uh, non-union received those increases, I believe, in May, and so what I did was I took the total amount that was put in, which was about a hundred and twenty-three thousand, the non-union portion was about twenty, so we have kind of set aside in our budget a hundred and three thousand for the union increases. We have numbers to work with, we don't have final contracts for the, the main four groups yet, but we have numbers to work with. Um, I haven't calculated everything yet on all the, the back pay, and there's a lot of different components that are going to result in additional dollars, uh, obviously just a plain percent and a half, and I'm not sure how the amount was calculated that was put in, but we've got the percent and a half. We've got overtime, which, you know, percent and a half times one and a half. Um, the longevity pay was increased by forty percent from five dollars per month, per year, to seven dollars per month, per year.
Is that a union thing, Ron?
Yes.
Okay.
The court time, minimum court payment, went up from two hours to three hours, so there's an extra hour for every court time. Uh, the break pay for the jail, for the COs, since their wages are going up, the break pay they've received also needs to be retroed in for the increase. The main component, um, obviously is a percent and a half, and like I said, I don't have figures on that yet, but the other issues, the break pay, the longevity, the court time, right now is about thirty-five thousand.
Well, define what you mean by court time.
The extra.
When deputies go testify at court or show up.
When they're off duty.
Right, let's say.
I meant protecting the courts.
No. Well, if they're, for example, they work night shift.
I see.
Or afternoon shift, and they have to appear for a court case.
Okay.
They have to get ready, get up, get ready, come in.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's what the court time is.
Do we have the option of sending people who are on duty to do court time?
No, it's typically, it has to be the officer that's involved in the offense, the case they have to testify.
Oh, that's right, I see, okay.
And it even gets into traffic violation.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, sure.
And far too often, we had talked with some of the prosecutors and asked them, you know, if, if this case looks like it's going to be cleared up, or you're going to make some deal on it, do we have to have the deputies there? And their view on that is, no, we don't, but far too often what happens is a defense attorney shows up, the police officer's not there, and then they won't do anything, because they, they know that there's a missing witness.
So then they get a postponement and do it again?
Yeah, it's, it's a struggle.
Sure.
Todd, did Ron say anything that you weren't aware of, I mean?
No, I, for the, well, for the extra hours and whatnot, is that thirty-five thousand, how much the changes cost, or is that how much those cost in total?
The changes.
Changes.
For break pay and longevity and court time.
So that would be one.
Okay. I didn't realize that we increased the longevity time forty percent in the, in the contract, in the, um, labor contract.
Are you kind of thinking that this contract that isn't settled will be about the same as what the others got, I mean, is that what you're thinking?
I.
You just have no idea?
I don't. Um, there were arguments from both sides, of course, you know, as to why they should get more.
Sure.
Um, I can only tell you, if I was the fact finder, when three-quarters of the agency settled their contracts, I would be kind of scratching my head at what, you know, give me something to show me.
That you need more.
Why you want more.
Mm-hmm.
That's just my view on it, um, and there were arguments on both sides, certainly, and I wouldn't venture to tell you what the fact finder might do.
Okay. We should know soon, I mean.
I would think before too long, yes.
Boy, this has been a really.
And then this is retroactive, right, when they settled?
Well, I don't know if you recall, Maureen, there's other contracts that have been, I've got a couple of years at times.
Oh, my gosh.
No, I guess I do.
I, I think you were, I'm sure you were on board when, we had a case one time, they get into fact finding and then conciliation, and that got dropped out.
Well, yes, well, yeah, then when it goes.
You remember that? It, it was quite a period of time before we got it settled.
How long is it retroactive till when?
Beginning of January this year.
January.
Mm-hmm.
I would think we should try to reach a consensus here on exactly what you've laid out there, Ron, and Sheriff, and.
Do we need to wait to see what the fact finder's report is?
Well, we probably do, but I mean, thus far, I mean, the things, the, the points that we know are going to go into effect, because we did have all the unions sign off except for the one. So we know that, that's, that's a reality.
Yeah.
And then.
Four out of the five bargaining units have.
Yeah.
Are in agreement to take what was offered.
Yeah, five, right, so we, given, you know, what Ron's provided today, I would think that would be a good pivot point for us to know what we're dealing with, totally, otherwise, or go ahead, you know, tell me.
If we can get those worked out, it's like, you know, one and a half was anticipated.
Yeah.
So that already is in there, some of the hourly changes and whatnot, we're going to calculate that out too.
At least we'll know, the board will know what we're looking at, dollar wise, and then hopefully Mr. Habauski will be able to wrap this up soon.
We did get into some overtime issues in the jail.
Sure.
Um, because of the overcrowding, and, you know, that, that hurts some. Could you make a copy of this for them, Ron? The nine copies are ready.
You forgot to sign this one. Oh, I thought you were.
Pardon? You don't need that.
That was in the folder, yeah.
I lied, Maureen. I told the sheriff I had good news, all right.
Oh, we don't have any good news.
Well, no, it's, it's.
I did notice, I really appreciate getting those stats every day.
Yeah.
And I've noticed that we're usually under the population that we can be maxed, like for two eighteen, sometimes it's below that. The real issue has to do with the number of females that are there.
Yes, that's been the issue.
So we need to go as quickly as possible to get that reconfiguration done in the jail. And so I'm wondering why we, we should move, maybe by the end of the month, we should go ahead and do the authorization to begin to do that reconfiguration?
Yeah, that, that, the total numbers, the, you know, the female population drives that up, that's where it's coming from continually. There, you know, there's other issues out there in the rest of the jail, but that's, that seems.
We can at least start with that.
Yeah, that's, that's.
You know, do you ever get the doors fixed, where they just don't come, they just come open and don't, or what?
No, and I'm getting real frustrated with that, because.
Thank you.
Vendors, um, it's been my experience, have done some finger pointing, and, and they're saying it's mechanical, and then they say, no, it's electrical, or electronic, and that's a computerized system, and I wish they would just come out and tell us that the thing is end of life.
Well, I think it is, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, and I'm not sure, excuse me, I'm not sure what would have to be done as far as, I don't, I don't know whether they put new doors up, you know, with, with the new computer system to operate that, or what.
At one point, I was told the system is just outdated, and there's nothing they can do with it.
It is, yeah. They can't even find parts for the doors.
Yeah, very true.
It's going to be an issue with the remodel, and especially the new pod, and if they're going to be running two door systems, or we've got to upgrade all the old to do the new, which makes it even more expensive.
But you know, Todd, I don't think we have any choice with those old doors, I mean, you just can't have the doors opening up.
So as we begin remodeling, there's going to be these additional catch-up costs in the old section as well, um, that, that weren't necessarily in those original estimates, but we kind of knew were there, but those estimates were only in the construction side.
That's the time to do it. That's the time, that way the whole system's.
Excuse me. Can we go over this sheet? If I'm understanding it correctly, at the very bottom in the red, it says compensation deficit overage.
She's making a copy of that sheet right now.
Oh, she is, thank you.
You know, you saved a lot of money on gas, right? Thirty-nine thousand, almost forty thousand. I walked into that one, didn't I?
Todd, why don't you pull a chair up?
Those bicycles, they can't be asked, do they?
I'm, I'm curious where the hundred, or two hundred and twenty thousand came from.
That's what they're.
That's this short sheet right here.
Yeah, but I was curious as to why.
Well, it's broken out into each department here in the state jail.
Yeah, raises were given for each department, is that what this is on the side?
The, the biggest part is in dispatch, where last several years we have contributed nine-one-one funds to that.
Oh, I see.
So our budget of what is normally spent is short a hundred and fifty thousand.
But what about these others?
That's coming out in dispatch.
You're not getting nine-one-one funds up for dispatch?
We're still getting, we haven't made any infusion of cash into the dispatch yet. Does the detective.
I mean, were raises given that we didn't know about?
No.
Is this all overtime, or why, why are we having so, so much for, um, salaries that were not, that wasn't included in the budget?
We're included in the twenty-seven pay, or should we still have to transfer it? No, that's, I don't have anything in there for the twenty-seven, I have.
So actually we're.
Besides the twenty.
Did you include in the twenty-seven pay, right?
Well, a hundred and fifty's still from nine-one-one, and there's there in there? Is there any adjustment? Oh, no, you have the adjustment.
There is in there, and that should be done probably this month, as far as moving that over.
Why?
So we just still need the adjustment for nine-one-one.
Yeah, why can't we move the nine-one-one money in there?
We would, he just does it.
He has, all that has to be done?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why that becomes such a critical issue on this.
That's why we cannot lose any money on that PSAP.
I still don't quite understand why we have so much money. I assume this number, this red number, two twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand, is money that you think you're going to need by the end of the year, is that correct?
That's our projected shortage right now, in all the compensation lines, again, it doesn't take into account the union increases.
The one that's outstanding.
Right, we don't have a good figure on it.
But others, the others are included?
No, they are not. The money that was set aside, I haven't included here, nor have I included the expected expenses, so both of those are sitting out here, so they're not going to muddy up things up.
So the union increases aren't in there, but you're projecting a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar shortage in all wages?
With the nine-one-one funds.
Nine-one-one funds will offset the majority of that.
How much are the nine-one-one?
And if you look at the first page, that hundred and twenty-four, overall in our budget, that's projected shortage, one twenty-four.
So the nine-one-one funds make up the rest of that?
Correct.
Okay, then let's take the one twenty-four thousand, why, why do you need more, a hundred and twenty-four thousand more than what was budgeted?
Well, that's the debt with the nine-one-one as well, so it's, they're actually positive by twenty-five almost.
If we moved a hundred and fifty of nine-one-ones over right now, we would have surplus.
Oh, and by the end, your projection then is by the end of the year, you would have a surplus?
One way or another, we can't end up in the red.
I'm not sure about that.
No, no, you're not going to have a surplus, well, I don't, from this, I wouldn't think you'd have a surplus.
I just heard you say the word, that's why I asked.
If we moved a hundred and fifty over right now.
She likes that word, surplus.
I do, but last year you did so well, I mean, there was, it was a small amount, there was money in there, so, so I, I don't need to panic?
No.
Okay. I keep going back to that PSAP issue, and how essentially used to have that money for dispatch.
Well, and if we have time, I wouldn't mind going into executive session for contract negotiations to talk about.
Okay, okay, sure.
I can review it?
Okay, make a motion, we go into executive session for purposes of contract negotiations in a second.
We'll call it that, ma'am.
Yes.
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 Two?
Yeah.
Okay.
The general entries for today.
Announced second.
All in favor, please indicate with a sign aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate with a sign aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Bye, Amy.